All right, it is 4:30. We'd like to begin. I'd like to ask you to rise. One thing we're going to do differently today out of respect, and it is to attribute to this Stephanie Schurz, I think is the name, how they pronounce her name, the deputy that was killed from Lyon County, we're going to observe a moment of silence in that time. I'd like you to just show your respect for that. If you want to say a prayer, you can do that. It's up to you. But we're going to have a moment of silence. When that moment of silence is concluded, then we will do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this morning, or this afternoon, excuse me. Counsel, we have the agenda before you. With one slight modification to the agenda, I would ask for your approval on that. Oh, let's do a roll call first.
Brad Hitt.
Here.
Sean Brewster.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Wayne Barahona.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
All right, now to the agenda. Stephanie Einkes, Kelly Einkes is planning to be here, but she's not going to get here until about 5 o'clock. So we're going to move that down to the end of the agenda so we can discuss that with her present. And with that modification, I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
It's working.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
All right. Are there any public comments that people would like to make at this time that do not relate to the other agenda, specifically the franchise agreements?
I have something if I could jump in. I was not at the last council meeting, and so I missed that. When I got back, I was kind of taken aback and looked at the, in the newspaper editorial, and there was some insinuation that the building that we're doing, the Mid-America is taking over and demolishing is some kind of a shady deal. In light of that, I guess I was kind of thinking that I couldn't understand that. But in light of that, I would like to at least offer the opportunity for anyone else that would like to purchase that building and demolish it properly, that anyone can take advantage of that. It's not a shady deal that's offered to Mid-America. So if any group or an individual or the newspaper would like to purchase that building, I think that we would entertain that. I don't know that I'd make a motion at this point, but I think that we'd all agree that that would be something we would entertain, so.
All right. Thank you, Pete. Any of the comments from any of you in the chairs there? All right, then let's move on to approval or consent agenda. Someone want to make a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Support.
Any further discussion? Any questions? If not, I'll take a roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
All right.
Barahona.
Hi.
You are out.
I am here.
All right. Skipping over item A under old business, let's move on then to our public hearing on the Mid-American franchise, the gas franchise, first of all. Are there any public comments that anyone would like to make relating to this matter?
I guess I think in lieu of the discussion that I missed out on the last time, just to clarify that there's really a couple of issues here, a couple of, I shouldn't say issues, a couple of things to consider. One would be the franchise, and two would be the fees, and they may or may not be separate entities. It is conceivable that we could do a franchise without the fees. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. And we can move on to that after we close the public hearing. If there's, are there any comments from anybody here? Yes, Marv, state your name, please. Come to the mic, state your name.
Yeah, Marv Van Rysen, Sheldon. I got a copy of the franchise agreement that you guys were looking at. There's a few issues on that. Of course, I was, before I started, I wanted to clarify something. As long as we're clarifying things, I did double check and checked for the press was correct. Isn't it the council voluntarily just wanted to bring this to a vote? They really wanted to, not move on it, but they stated, if we don't, they'll just make us vote anyhow. And that can be all verified. I've verified it in different ways, even through the mail, son. So I just wanted to verify that, just for the record. And it wasn't exactly done like it is voluntarily, like you're happily doing it. Okay, going on to the franchise. In this ordinance that you want to approve, there's, right on page one already, about the term of franchise, the company has granted the right of eminent domain, which they don't have now, which is subject to the city council approval for an application by the company. That's off the book. We don't need that. First place, we don't need the franchise. We don't need the franchise fee, and we certainly shouldn't be giving them eminent domain either, because they can just come chop on your property anytime they want, because that's what with the mounts do. Other items that are marked on here, oh, about them, the company shall defend, indemnify, and so forth. In other words, it talks about how more or less gives you the impression that, well, you can't be sued. Well, I think, believe we have insurance for that, for one thing. And not only that, I've been in business for 40 years, and I'm going to tell you guys something. When the lawyers come after you, they're going to come after you, because they're going to come after your great-grandmother if you think they can get a nickel out of her, even if they're in the cemetery. That's the way that deal goes. So this idea that they just can't sue you is kind of a fallacy. Another item, on page seven, the city agrees to modify the level of the franchise fee imposed only once in any 24-month period. So in other words, you could modify the business one, I suppose. You could jack that up. You're starting low now, but I think you got the one at the max, so you could jack that one up, which I'm sure you would. On page nine, section 20, to the fullest extent permitted by law, each of the parties, here are two ways, it's all this legal stuff with lawyer writing, so waives any right to have a trial by jury. Who in the world would ever give up the right for a trial by jury? It'd be bad enough doing it personally, that alone doing it for 5,000 people in this community. I'd never do that. I would never do that. In fact, upon the date of the ordinance, the prior, okay, the franchise granted, the company shall furnish electric services to the city. We're going to get the electricity here regardless. They're not going to pull out of town if we don't have a franchise or a franchise fee. Let's get that straight. And getting back to whether we need this franchise or not, I told you before, and I'm going to tell you again, it's going to be a hardship on a lot of good people in this town, in this community.
Define a lot when you say a lot. How many, what kind of percentage are we talking about here? The people that can't buy toilet paper, I think was your comment from the last meeting.
Greg, I want to make a joke of that.
I'm not making a joke. I want to know what kind of percentage. It's a simple question. I would like an answer. You said a lot. When they're talking about a lot, what kind of percentage are we talking about?
I'm going to tell you something. Anytime when you're affecting anybody like this magnitude, it's substantial. Anybody that, I believe that's on a fixed income, or the poor, and I'm not going to list names, but there's plenty of them out there. Go check, if you check your wards, you're going to see there's plenty of poor people in the wards. I shouldn't have to go do that for you.
Yeah, but you're the one that's throwing out the terms.
I do not know what the percentage is.
20%, 10%, 50%? When you say a lot, that's meaning indicates more than 50%.
I'm not going to stand there. I didn't take a poll.
Okay.
And I'm not going to. But I've talked to plenty of people. I've talked to people, organizations that work with them type of people, and I'm not going to name them here in public either, but I've talked to organizations that work with people like that. And it's not even funny.
I'm not laughing.
Well, you shouldn't be either.
I'm not. You're the one that threw the number. You're using the terms. I just want clarification.
I don't know what percentage would be.
Okay.
That's good enough. All right, here's another item. We have given, we're giving you taxes on our homes every year after year after year that's supposed to be buying these things, police cars, fire trucks. We've given it to you. You openly admitted you spent 20 years of fireman money that they thought they were saving for 25, or for 20 years, and you didn't have it. It's gone. I've asked three, four times, where is it at? And nobody can tell me. I think, we're not going to try to GIP, SCAT, and Fire Department, and the Police Department. We're going to give them the equipment they need. But I believe the money's there. I know the money's there. Look at the taxes we've been paying. It's how you're spending it. That's the problem, right there. Until you go through this budget, and I believe you can go through this budget, we don't need this fee, period. And we don't need this franchise either. As simple as that. But you got to, you got to be willing to do that. I'm making the suggestion to you tonight, I think the paper put it right in the editorial today. Hold off six months to a year till we get to this next budget, and see what we can do with that budget. There's all kinds of money in there. I've identified a big one before, but nobody wants to talk about it. This insurance thing. There's huge savings there that you can put towards this thing. I'm saying probably right around 320 to 400,000 bucks, and that's just one item. And it goes on and on and on in that budget. So let's wait. I think that's a fair thing. I think the public would go along with that real well. Just hold off on this thing for six months to a year. What's the hurry? What's the hurry? And furthermore, as far as that article in the paper about the old thermocell building down here, it is kind of a coincidence. All of a sudden they want that. I can see where that would, they would get that.
Is that a problem?
Huh?
Is that a problem?
It just looks at the timing with this franchise. It looks bad.
But it, I.
And if it didn't have a tie to it, why do you keep bringing it up? So you can bring this off to the public.
I don't see it as a problem.
Well.
Maybe you do.
Nevertheless, I'm asking you to forget about this franchise and this fee for now. Wait six months to a year till we get through this next budget cycle. I think this will help you get involved in that budget cycle. We're willing to help you. We're willing to help show you. We can save it.
So whether or not we take the time to wait on the fee, how would that affect Sheldon entering into a franchise with Mid-American? Whether we wait six months, three months, a year, two years?
Just be, you're not going to need it. In the first place, even in.
So you bring up the indemnification part, that when lawyers get involved, they go after everybody.
Oh, absolutely. Sure they do.
Why wouldn't you want to get some sort of agreement on the books to try and prevent having such a legal malady versus, you say the city's got insurance.
You bet. All kinds of it.
Yeah. Do you want to spend that money? Do you want to go after insurance claims? I don't, you talk about the problems that we have with insurance already. Why are we?
I'm talking liability insurance.
Yeah, but insurance is insurance. You know it as well as I do, that you use it, you pay for it. So why not get this?
We don't need this, we don't need this franchise, no. I'm saying, it seems to me like somebody's awful anxious to get this franchise for some reason, and you're awful anxious to get it through.
I'm sorry. I guess, I don't think six months or a year or two is going to cure any of the feelings on the franchise fee. I really don't. Anytime you start talking about fees, there are going to be people that think that we need them, and you're going to find people that think that we don't need them. I guess at this point, I would make a motion to remove the fees from the ordinance.
We can't do that now. We're going to have to wait till the.
Okay, I'll wait till then.
It's nice this is all planned. It's obvious for that. Even then, we do not need a franchise. We haven't even done the negotiating. Have you done the negotiating on, even if you didn't have a franchise fee?
What's to negotiate?
You'd be surprised what you might be able to negotiate.
Well, we kind of want to know.
What is it?
Huh?
What is it?
Now, you've got guys sitting here, and you want me to tip some of the handles? It ain't going to happen here, fellas. You guys should have thought about that before you brought this stuff up. It is my responsibility. You guys should have thought of this before.
Well, no, if you're going to accuse us of not doing research, and you've done the research, please enlighten us on what this research is.
The research is, I'll tell you what, you want to wait to the polls, we'll go to the polls and vote on this deal.
Vote on what? You're talking about you have information that would be helpful for the city as a whole, but you're willing to withhold that because you want to make us look bad?
No.
No, because you said you don't want to tip our hand.
No.
Well, shouldn't we all be working together to try and create?
You don't want to tip your hand to somebody who's going to negotiate what you might want as a Mid-American. Why would you do such a thing?
But if you're talking about the fact that we don't want it, we don't need it, then why would we negotiate on it?
You don't know what they have to offer. You don't know what happens down the road.
Right, so then why not, why don't we get into the discussion with them?
Trust me. I know.
You know? How do you know?
Wayne, because I tell you all we know, we went this many years without a franchise. We can go another 15, 30 years without one.
All right, we can carry this conversation on at another time. Thanks, Marv.
Laurie Anderson, Sheldon. How long have we had Mid-American Energy providing our services to our community?
Since they existed, it was IPS 30 years ago.
Okay, so for 30 years we've had it.
I don't know when.
Have we had any kind of legal ramifications for not having a franchise with Mid-American?
Let's ask Mark Rinders to address that. Mark, do you know? Could you answer that?
Okay. So what is the impetus for moving so quickly on said franchise? Let's forget about the fees. Why do it?
Well, relocation expense is one reason to do it.
Relocation expenses. Tell me more about that.
Okay. If the city decides to widen a street, and the utilities are in the way, without a franchise agreement, they could, if they chose, and you can help me on this, they could, if they chose, say, no, we're not going to accrue that expense.
Do you have plans? Do you have plans?
Can I finish, please?
Sure.
You're widening the street. It's your expense. They could do that.
Okay.
They are, I think, Mark, you're going to have to help me out, but I think in this franchise agreement, you're offering to indemnify against those relocation expenses on a public project. Okay. So to me, that could be huge.
Could be. Do you have big plans to widen a bunch of streets in town?
We did, and we decided not to.
Okay, so therefore, it's not really an issue. Is that right?
Okay.
So I'm just telling you, if you want to, if you want to ask about percentages of people, I can tell you that just about 100% of the people who live west of Old Highway 60 are having issues with paying for additional costs to their monthly budget.
Okay.
Okay, just about 100%. We have organizations that regularly, and I think it's really unfair to say that what Marvin said is that people can't afford to buy toilet paper. He included co-pays in that, and if you want to go talk to Love Inc. about the number of people who come to Love Inc. and get basic human need supplies, I'm sure they could share with you a number. I think that's really unfair to have misquoted him. I can assure you, there are many patients, many, many, it was on the radio after the last meeting. That's what they said. They failed to throw in there that it was for co-pays. There are organizations, church organizations in this town that give money to Heidi and Louis to support patients who can't afford their co-pays. That is the reality of this community. And we have a lot of people who are living on fixed incomes that you're going to add another 3% to 5% on top of their already increasing water bill. I mean, the list goes on and on. I think the reality is, we do need to sit down with the budget and have a realistic conversation about where the heck this money is going, where has it been going. When things are earmarked for EMS and suddenly they end up in the general budget, that's the problem. It isn't that you all don't have enough money to spend, it's how you're spending it. So I am totally against this. I think it should be at least put aside so we can have reasonable conversations about the line item things that are in the budget that can be affected. I don't think Mid-Americans going anywhere. And when we talk about our negotiating power, we should really find out, okay, Mid-American, what are you going to do for us? And since it can't be tear down this building because it's not a quid pro quo, then what, then what else? Can you build us a fishing pier on our pond? Can you, you know, whatever, legitimate questions. But you don't do it for nothing. We don't need it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Sam.
If I could ask Mark, Mark Rinders to.
I was going to let anybody else comment first, and I'll say that.
Okay, if we could do that while the public hearing is still open.
Okay. Anyone else would like to comment?
Daniel D., Sheldon. I'm new to the community, been here about a year. I'm looking present and going into the future. And I think personally, we need to look at that aspect of it. Look at where the community's evolving, growing, and everything else like that. So for me and others that are in my age group, we support it. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Good. Just breathe. I'm Tricia Mandering, in case you don't know. I live at 615 Seventh Avenue. I brought notes to stay on track, but if I do chase a squirrel, somebody, please, feel welcome to get my attention and get back on track, because my intention is to speak of where we've been, where we're going, how we can do that. And I am speaking in support of the franchise fee. In the role that I'm in now as the general manager at the Pavilion and as the former mayor, I've been in your seats, obviously, and I was part of this process of getting to this stage. So I felt like I needed to come and share a little bit of my feelings towards the franchise agreement and the franchise fee. And I understand, when you're in that seat, you guys have a great duty. We had a great, I did, now you do. Your goal is to make the decisions of what's best for the whole, not for the 15%. Try to shoot for 85%. That's what Dwayne Walsh from always said to me. Go for the 85. You're not going to please them all, but as long as you're good with you, you're good with God, you're making the best decisions you can for the betterment of Sheldon today and the future. That's all you can do. So listen to the negative, listen to the positive, go back, vet it, research it, and move forward. But as you all know, we're a growing community. We've been growing. And with growing, our pains, all of us have pains in growing. So for the many years that I sat in your seat, Greg, and I was the mayor, we took a lot of pride, as you were a councilman and even before that, on all the accomplishments and the great things that we were able to do in this city. We kept track of those in our goal-planning sessions from 2009, 2014, 15, 17, and hopefully are going to do one again soon. One of the things that I thought of recently was, gosh, that we prided ourselves on that, not raising taxes, but being able to do great things. And then I got to thinking, well, why, maybe we should have nickled and dimed it up. But the thing was, we did what we could do with the revenue we had, with the budget we had, and what was left over. How can we plan for that moment in time? Because let's face it, we're not going to raise taxes for a savings account. We're not a bank. We're not in that kind of business, right? The other thing that we took great pride in is we paid our debt early when we can, such as the pool. Yes? Yes. We've been doing great things, and we continue to do great things. We're continuing to dream. We're continuing to grow. But with that, are our pains. So with those pains, the discussion came up of the possibility of a franchise fee. That possibility came up in the actual words of 2015 in our goal-setting planning, when we had, what's that guy's name?
Jeff Shot.
Jeff Shot. Love that guy. Kept us on track, in and out of here in just a matter of a few hours. Really helped us focus. Public was welcome. But the very first time that we brought that up is issues and concerns in our budget and finance was finding some source of funding for infrastructure, what's going to be the impact of property taxes with the rollbacks for the future city revenues, how are we going to plan for loss of these backfill dollars possibly? And in one of our priorities in 2015, we talked about the consideration of adoption of a franchise fee. That's when the discussion started, almost four years ago. This is not new news. It's old. It's old news. And I don't want to get all feisty, and I want to be positive. The problem is, we're growing. So as we go through our budget, which everybody was invited to, we would have them at the lunch hour, we would have them at 4:30, we would have them in the evening. Some people would attend, some wouldn't. If you didn't attend, we took it as we're doing a good job. When things are going well, you don't hear things, you know? When we have some negative, you'll hear that, you know, when something is bad, you'll hear a little negative comments. Don't let a few negatives hold you back on thinking what's best for the community. So I just wanted to remind you, we started thinking about this council in 2015. Then again, in 2017, it came back up, and that's when we actually started to vet it. There were ideas of how might this work with Mid-American. This is not the only franchise possibility agreement we have in Sheldon. We have an agreement with HTC, which is now Premier. We have utility easements on our property. And right now, the gentleman handshake is wonderful. And I might say, Mid-American, you're part of our community. Thank you, Craig. I see you in the parades. Thank you for the grants that you have donated on behalf of Mid-American to, like, the Prairie Arts Council. You're involved. They're not out here to get us in the backside. They're part of our community. I don't think they're out to get us. This thermocell is old news. That's been a discussion. I don't even know if you guys were part of it. Three years. Because the public was on our tush about cleaning up that property, and we wanted to, but knowing the condition what it was in, is in, you can't just sell it to any Joe public. So we thank you, because you're going to take on a little bit of a challenge with that property. Thank you very much. And I echo what you say, Pete. If anybody else wants to buy it, step right up.
Go for it.
Anyway, focus, squirrel got me away. Let me go to my page three before I get to page four. Franchise fee. Gentleman's handshake. Yeah, it's worked, but let's be better businesspeople. And let's have something in writing, so that if we do continue to grow, and we happen to have a plan someday to maybe widen a street somewhere, who knows? Maybe it'll be East Ninth Street, we'll widen and have curbs. I don't know, I'm just saying. The possibilities are there. They could continue to be great gentlemen. They could disappear and new gentlemen take their places and be like, uh-uh, we're not going to be the good man handshake anymore. We need the agreement to go with the fee. Now, the fee, as we grow, this fee would be awesome if we could say all of it's going to emergency services, and I personally think it should. And when someday emergency services is doing well, maybe then that council can decide if some of it should go for street repair, improvement of infrastructure, because lord knows, going back to 2009, infrastructure and upkeep is always an ongoing issue that the city would love to take on, but it's not always in our budget. So nothing against street and infrastructure, but as we grow and as our community grows, we need to keep up with the emergency services that we have. Right now, we're, we are wonderful. We're great. We're struggling with getting volunteers. Now, with a franchise fee, and if that can help the budget for emergency services, fire, police, SCAT, EMA, then what they need from our general budget can then go to the other things that we might need for infrastructure, street repair, et cetera. So if we don't do this, which it's going to be up to the public, we're going to vote in November, and then we'll decide. But when that time comes, and if it were to fail, which I have faith that it'll pass, then we're going to have to look at, what do we cut? And will it be emergency services? And if our emergency services care or cost budget goes down, are we going to have the top equipment? It's not about a shiny fire truck. They do look good, but it's about the best equipment, the best service that we can provide. And if that goes down, our care goes down, your volunteers go down. And when I have to call 911 someday, God forbid, I need them to be there with the best that they can be. And if we ever have to take away from that, God forbid, say goodbye to growth. Not done. I'm on page three and a half. I'm still on four. Am I preaching to the choir? Sorry.
Can you finish it up in two minutes?
Uh, maybe. Yes, I only have this much to go.
All right.
So what I would like to finish on is stick with the plan to go to a vote. So what I would like to finish on is stick with the plan to go to a vote. Have faith in our community. If they want it, they're going to vote for it. If they don't, will we relook at things? Will they be suffering? Possibly. But when people want to come back to us and say Sheldon's not growing, or we can't go further, well, that's also in their hands. And my last, my Mid-American bill last month at 615 Seventh Avenue was $195. Of that $195, I paid $1.95 in taxes. Now, if you pass, if we pass this, and the 5% goes up on residential, I will now pay $9.75 in taxes. The difference is $7.80. I never heard any comments about the toilet paper, but is that a lot? For me, I'm thankful it's not. Is it going to be for some? Yes. Are there ways to help those people with their Mid-American bills, their utility bills? Yes. Are we a community that comes together and supports each other in time of need? Yes. Will we continue a summer lunch program? Will loving continue? Yes, it's because that's what we do. We're a community that's growing. We're going forward. We care about each other. And if we want to keep the momentum of being positive, then you are going to make the right decisions for what's best for us. And when we go to vote, hopefully we'll support you in those right decisions. But I'm for a franchise fee. Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Any other comments? Mark, at this point, oh, Artis is coming forward.
Artis Bonastro, I'm sorry, but I have to say something. I am not here for the franchise. I feel if you want this franchise to pass, then take back your raises that you did on our water and sewer bills. Maybe then more people would feel like they could vote for that. But increasing the water and sewer has already put problems for people for that increase. That increase could have been taken care of had they not built the Pavilion without the people's agreement on that. The money that you say you're making with the Pavilion, then use that to pay for these increases and not increase our taxes and the franchise. I work with EMS, and I fully support that, and I think we're self-supporting that we can do without this franchise. I'm sorry, but I know that's probably not what you wanted to hear, but that's my thought. Take back some of the other costs, then we can't keep raising costs for the people of Sheldon. Thank you.
Thank you, Artis. Anybody else? Last call. Mark, do you want to have some comments?
Sure, appreciate that. Mark Rinders, I'm the franchise manager for Mid-American. Just to clarify, Mid-American is neutral on the franchise fee, a portion of the franchise. That's entirely up to you as the citizens and as a community, whether you want to do fees. So my only comments are going to be talking about the franchise itself. Specifically, Mark's comments at the beginning, you reference eminent domain, Mid-American or any other utility doesn't have the right, the legal right, to do eminent domain. That's why we ask a city to be that partner with us. We don't, we rarely use the concept, and it also would still have to come back to you as a city and the council, even if we wanted to do eminent domain, if we needed a new substation on the north side of town, for example. We would negotiate with the property owner, give them above-market value for their land, but if they choose not to do it, which of course is their right, we would come back to a future council and ask for their help with eminent domain. But we still can't do that, and that, again, is back on the city. The comment about being sued, Wayne, I think, made some good points. Basically, yeah, you're going to get sued, but we're saying with a franchise in place, Mid-American's going to pay for any damages that would result for the city. So if the settlements for $100,000, Mid-American would pay for the city's portion with a franchise agreement in place. Some of the value of the franchise, the two biggest ones are, again, the relocation that Pete was talking about, and you had some comments about. Craig can verify, that's his world, the operations side, but we are talking thousands and thousands of dollars when we have to relocate our facilities, depending on the size of the project and all those kinds of things. But we, as a company, with a franchise agreement in place, automatically eat that. Without a franchise in place, then it does, it can come back to a compromise kind of situation with the city. A demification, again, we're taking the responsibility if somebody sues you. The concept of thermal cell building being part of this franchise is just wrong. I don't know any other way to say it. We've talked about it a numerous amount of times. We've been in negotiations, I think, over three years on that building. It's a complicated situation because of the EPA issues there, past ownership, liability, and all those kinds of things. So I didn't even know about the thermal cell building until I started talking with Sam at the beginning of this year about the franchise. So we are moving forward with it. We don't have a done deal, again, because of some of the issues that are tied with that. But to make it sound anywhere like the two things are together is totally wrong. A franchise also, I think, helps out with, like Todd's team, when there's an issue about, you know, staking things, who's going to move what? What franchise agreement kind of spells all that out, and that is another good forum for a city to have. We've also, there have been a couple of comments to make it sound like this is on the fast track. We've really been doing this for seven, eight months now. I think we first, Sam and Todd, maybe, or Kurt, I think, and I met in February of this year. We've also, the agreement that they're voting on, or could vote on tonight, is also a work that has been negotiated with MICA and Sam's input and the council. So it's not like we just gave them a document and the city's agreeing to that. There have been modifications made to the agreement. That's what we do whenever we have a franchise out there. Appreciated the comments about Mid-American being a community supporter. We are. We're very proud of that. Somebody noted Craig and his team are in parades, they're on committees, they're doing organizations. We did a $20,000-plus grant to Northwest Village this year, Village Northwest. I have a list here of various things. We do trees grants every year. We've done $1,000 tree grant to Sheldon for over the last 30 years. So we are a part of the community. That's what we do as a company. With the companies that we have franchise agreements with and the cities we serve in Iowa, we are a partner with them, and we're proud of that, and that's what we want to continue to do with Sheldon. And this franchise helps solidify that. I don't know if I've covered any of the points we were trying to make.
You have.
Yes, sir.
Well, it wouldn't bother you to wait for another six months a year?
We will. I mean, we're at the mercy of the community. I guess we have been talking about it for eight months. I don't know if another six months is going to...
Another question. Do you see the number of dollars you do give a little different options? How many dollars does Mid-American take out of this community every year?
I don't have that at the top of my head, but we make money. But in return for that, you get reliable electricity and natural gas service. Our rates are among the lowest in the country. We're ninth lowest in the country. We're competitive with, I think, any other utility provider in Northwest Iowa. We're working toward 100% renewable energy portfolio, which means basically on any given day, the energy that's powering this building and your homes and businesses is going to be produced by renewable energy. We're already at 52% of that. We're aiming for 100 within the next couple of years, so...
Here's a gold mark, I love it here. Born reason. I don't want to remember Mid-American. I can remember distinctly, years, big deal when they had a franchise thing, that all the stuff didn't be on the ground in 10 years. Many years after that, look, it's all on your own?
I, no.
You see where it's kind of becoming, I mean, you say you're going to do something, you don't know for sure that's going to be. That can change your heartbeat. Your answer, you're going to like to answer a question about the move forward.
Correct, absolutely.
Right.
Gentlemen, for the sake of getting it on camera, on the mic too, I think, let Mark finish, and then if you want to recap, you can do that then.
I would, we did, I would like to just note that today's editorial in Northwest Iowa Review, I think, speaks well toward it. It just notes two paragraphs. "There are good reasons other communities have forged an official agreement with a company that provides electricity and natural gas service to the residents and businesses. We agree that elevating this handshake agreement to a formal contract is worth exploring to resolve concerns about liability." And that's really what we're looking for. We're trying to solidify the relationship we have with Sheldon, with this franchise.
And again, we are the only community you serve that does not have a franchise agreement at this point.
That is correct, and we're talking 700, about 700 franchises.
We must be geniuses.
I might, Mr. Mayor.
Just hold on, Sam has a question first.
I have a clarification question for Mark. There's two questions that I'd like to ask you, Mark, to answer for the record. One is, if you could address the concern that's been raised to some of us regarding, you know, can REC or somebody else just step in, can we put it up for bid, quote unquote? I know it says non-exclusive, but address that. Number two, talk about the rate increases. You've previously committed publicly to not bringing forward a rate plan for 10 years. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. The Iowa Utilities Board, decades ago, basically patterned out all of Iowa in terms of what utility is going to provide what town and customer. IPS at that time had Sheldon, and when IPS was merged with Mid-American, that continues. The Iowa Utilities Board really doesn't allow for it going out to bid. So unless we really mess up and don't live up to your expectations and what we're saying we're going to do as a utility provider, the Iowa Utilities Board is going to continue to make Sheldon be served by Mid-American. I don't want to make that sound bad, because we hope that we're doing a good job for you. Again, from the rates and the reliability, we have 99.9% reliability rates out there, which is good. So no, the answer, short answer is no. No one else can come in and serve Sheldon according to the Iowa Utilities Board rules. And second part, I forgot already.
The rates.
The rates, okay. I should be able to handle that one. We had not raised electric rates in Iowa for our Iowa customers since 1995, until about two or three years ago, there was a small bump in there at around 4, I believe, for the Sheldon customers. We are also projecting, because of our efforts with the wind and the renewable energy, tuning to 2029 without a rate increase. So you're really going from 1995 to 2029 without much of a rate increase at all. And I don't know if you can find that to be true with almost any other product or commodity or service out there.
My point clarification is...
Please step forward.
Are you saying that 100% of all communities who utilize American energy as their service provider have a franchise? 100%, I mean, besides us? Like, all of the communities throughout?
The Mid-American services.
Okay.
No difference, please? I guess so. I have 20, 25 communities every year that come up for routine renewal, and I work on those, so Sheldon is the only one that does not have a valid franchise in place on the Mid-American side.
There are some communities that have municipal utilities, but we found out the hard way 30 years ago that that is not going to happen.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Mark.
Can I just have a recap on a couple items here that, for example, there's a lot of different reasons, okay? Some of them have, because they don't have a tax base like we have. Some of them are a small community, and they do it for extra income. I've talked, that's why they've done it. And another thing, I guess it's immaterial how much money I make or what you make, Tricia. It's sort of disingenuous to say that my utility, it's only going to cost me $7. Tricia? There are people out there that can't afford that $7, whether you believe that or not. Simple as that. And we don't need it.
We're not getting anywhere.
Yep, Mark. Anything else?
Okay, pardon me.
Do you have...
Yeah, one other thing. I just want to say, I am not, we're not against the police department or the ambulance or fire department or anything like this. Sometimes it's a misconception. It's a matter of trust. I still say we should wait six months to a year to think about, let's work this budget over. If you want, if this is going through, there's no way you guys have worked that budget over. We've got some serious budget problems here, including the insurance that you want to address properly. Now, we'll take that up a little later.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd also like to say, and you're in dire straits, you need the money and everything.
Put your name, please.
Kerwin Stoller. Getting back to saying how bad off Sheldon is and how much that we need the money, what it comes back to is, yeah, you, how did we get in this position? We've been, this hasn't just happened overnight. This has been building for years. So it matters that we correct the budget, and it comes back to taking care of it. As far as the franchise itself agreement, I can't say I'm against it, but I sure am against the fee.
Thank you, Kerwin. Last chance, anyone wants to speak to this as part of the public hearing?
I guess I'm going to go out on a limb and...
We'll make a motion to close the public hearing, first of all.
Okay.
Somebody want to do that?
I'll make the motion to close.
Support. Roll call, please.
Bruce, sir.
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
All right, now Pete.
I guess with that in mind and discussions, and that's why we have public discussions, okay, that's why we're here, is to try and look at all the options, okay? Not all things are palatable to all people, but that's why we meet, and that's why we opened up public discussions, to get different opinions, to explore all the options. And you're always going to have opinions. If you've got two people, chances are you're going to have two opinions. With that in mind, I would make a motion to remove the fee from the ordinance and approve a second reading and set a third reading for September 3, along with another public hearing.
September 4.
September 4.
September 4.
Is there support for that motion?
All support.
Discussion.
The other thing I guess I would address is that I can remember vehemently how heated things were 30 years ago when we were trying to form our own utility and how vocal it got. I think Frank went down to that meeting, and it's simply not an option. They showed us that, and we spent a pile, we spent a lot of money with that campaign, and it went nowhere. And so with that, I would like to move on. And it's not a hurry. We've been mulling it over for 30 years. But without the fees, I think we can have some intelligent discussion.
Any other comments, questions?
I think then it's just going to fall back onto the property owners, if we have to raise taxes to fund these other services of the emergency services that's projected. So I think it falls back onto the property owners, so the property owners are going to in turn charge more for rent. So it's going to hit the property owner, resident, again. Whether it's the franchise fee that's going to help pay for these extra services, or we raise property taxes, it's still going to fall back onto the person residing in that house. If you have the franchise fee, it spreads it out, not just to the property owners, it spreads it out amongst everybody that has a utility bill, with the exception of the schools. That's my two cents.
Can I say something? Who negotiated the 5%?
Come to the mic, please.
Kerwin Stoller, I was wondering who negotiated the 5% and the 2% for the businesses? Who negotiated that?
That was a council decision.
So, and getting back to where Brad's at, it still comes back to managing your money. You can make all the money in the world. You can make a million dollars a year. If you waste it, it's gone.
I want to be able to go in to a new budget session coming up and say, all right, this is our opportunity to right the ship. And I will also say that with the inclusion of Sam, getting, adding him to the city has been nothing but a blessing. I do wholeheartedly believe that we are headed in the right direction. I wouldn't be sitting here if I felt that we, that we were destined for failure. And I do understand that we're going to have to make some tough decisions, and we're going to have to tighten our belt. Marv, I agree with you. I think there's, there, there is potentially money there that could be reallocated. However, that being said, I don't want to be, I've had a lot of people wagging their finger at me. Well, all right, first of all, I've only been here a couple months, so I'm, I'm late to the party, so let me, let me get on y'all's level for a minute. But I do look forward to the opportunity of seeing how we can work together, because I, I really do like the system we have in place right now. It may mean that we have to tighten our belts, and I guess if that is what it takes, then so be it. But I like the perseverance, I like the will, and I like the spirit that we have on this council, and I look forward to moving forward. Now, I'm chasing Tricia's squirrel, so I'll stop.
If I might, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
One thing that needs to be stated for the record of the count, and this can be discussed further at third reading, if the council chooses to move forward without the, the fees, if the fees were to be added in later, it would trigger another round of public hearings and a, a potential public vote. And I just want that, I just want that stated clearly for the record that it's not something we could just add in the, in the budget, we would have to go through the process.
Yeah. All right, are we ready for a vote? Rule call, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
Nope.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to the second portion of this Mid-American discussion, I'd like to open the public hearing discussing the Mid-American electric franchise fee. I think much of the comments probably are going to be the same. If you have something new to add, now is your time.
Yeah, Marvin, there's, there's a couple other things that I didn't mention I wanted to, but in essence of time, I want everybody else to have a chance. But anyhow, there's, as far as finances go, that, for the city, why I don't feel you need it, there's a substantial amount of TIF money or property that is not on the tax rolls that could be very beneficial, that we got to watch that. We have $93 million, I think it is, on, on, that we're not getting taxes for, for general services like peace, police, fire, and ambulances. And I checked Premgar with these figures, and it comes to $1,200,000,000 coming in every year. So you take that and put that in the general fund alone, I mean, that's a lot of money. So we got, we got to do something. I'm not saying we should take all the economic development stuff away, but I think we're going to have to look at this and say, hey, what's the limit here so we can get this back on the tax rolls? Because that's what's really killing us, and you can get in trouble with the city with using TIF, overuse it, and we're doing that. And, and other cities have, we understand. I don't know what cities, but I'll find out for you, but I know some cities have really had some issues with this deal.
Okay.
I have one more thing.
Okay.
Not long. Sorry, as I come up. In no way did I mean to insinuate that we're bad off as a city. I think we're great as a city. So if I came off that way, I hope that didn't come off.
I've got, I've got...
Okay. Like our financial, we are in great financial standing. What I'm talking about, we're, okay, maybe okay.
If you want to comment, you can do so after, Tricia.
Allow me to finish. What I'm talking about is what we're planning for, for the future. And that's where I stand for the franchise fee. If we want to do things that are in our capital improvement plan, and I'm not saying all of that, because that is a dream for us to possibly work towards, but if our capital improvement plan is what we're wanting to look at, then that's where I see the financial burden being eased by a franchise fee. Now, I don't think we're bad off. Are we in a little bit of a pickle or things are tight right now? Yep. But we're okay. And if you disagree, here's the microphone.
Thank you, Tricia. Rob?
Rob Dixon. Good point of clarification by Sam regarding the franchise fee. We're in effect, by eliminating a reference to it in the current motion, as we're separating the issues, right? I mean, we're separating the issue of franchise agreement and the issue of franchise fee. Franchise fee does not go away permanently. It can, it can come up again.
But only by the same process.
Right.
It can't be just put on.
Okay, but it doesn't go away.
Of course not.
It, it's still out there as a possibility. We're just separating the issues of agreement and fee. So our proposal going forward and the, the issue that will come before the public, to vote on November, will for now just be the agreement.
Right? Assuming we continue after the next session? I mean, we didn't, we didn't do anything...
Yeah, well, assuming this continues to move along, we've now configured things so that in November, we would only be voting on the agreement, per se, exclusive of the fee. And...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and fee then may resurface, but again, subject to the process, as you say, so...
30 years from now, well, I guess it's only a 15, we, in 15 years, we could readdress it, or next year, yes, it could come up again, but it would also have the same opportunity that we have today. We're not eliminating any of that.
Yeah. Well, good, good clarification.
Sam, will you add a comment, just share what you shared with me now?
At the May 5 council meeting, the council signaled the desire, it wasn't official motion, but the discussion was, if this included a fee, the council themselves would put it on the November ballot. And if it doesn't include the, the fee, the franchise itself could go to a public vote, but then that would trigger a referendum. In other words, collecting the signatures to put it on the ballot. Because the, the commitment was to put it on the ballot if, if it had, by the council, if it had the fee in it. And without the fees, they would just, they would move at this next meeting on September 4th to approve third reading, and then there would be a publication and a, a time period for it to be referred by signature to a ballot if the fees weren't in it. Does that make sense, Rob?
We are kind of...
Okay. Mica, can you help me? I'm not sure I articulate. Did that make sense, what I was trying to say?
This is how I understand what Sam is saying. Is that the council, early on this year, made an assurance that if there would be a franchise ordinance, including a franchise fee, the council would by itself trigger an election.
Yes.
With a new development here of potentially having a franchise ordinance that does not include a franchise fee, the council is not necessarily assuring that it, the council, would trigger the election. Rather, the public would still have the opportunity to request, called their referendum, an election, but if that didn't happen, an ordinance, if passed without the fee, could take place without an election. Is that what you...
Yes, sir.
...were trying to articulate?
Okay.
And just to clarify procedurally, the way I understand things as they sit right now, on the gas franchise, per Pete's motion as passed, he's asking that it move to a third reading without a franchise fee included. It would still have to pass that third reading before anything official is happening with an ordinance. And then an ordinance has to be published, and then, per the law, the franchise would have to be accepted by Mid-American. So we are moving forward, but we're certainly not at a point of completion with the ordinance process.
So the public vote was in status now, in light of Pete's motion?
Rob?
I don't think the council has made a decision on that. I think what Sam was trying to articulate is that when the council made a previous statement about having an election, it was under the assumption that there would be a fee included. Sam is trying to state that the council may not necessarily take that position if they pass an ordinance that does not include a fee.
Okay, so the public vote is up in the air then at this point?
That's what I am hearing.
Yeah. It may not, it may not happen.
That's just gas, right?
Right. The first motion was for electric.
It was for gas.
For gas, whatever. Okay, yes.
But there would be, Kerwin, there would be a third, there would be a third reading and another public hearing on both, on September 4th. So nothing would happen until September 4th.
Do you, do you still have the vote on November 4th yet, or no?
Okay, we're talking about two different votes, okay? The council has not taken any action today on the second reading of the electric franchise. No motion has been made about taking fees away from electric at this point. Whether that's coming or not, I don't know. The other vote that's being discussed here is the potential for the public to vote at the next general election on whether they approve of the franchise ordinance. That vote can come to fruition in different ways. It can come by the city council saying, we want to have a vote, which is what was discussed in May 5. It can get to the election and be put on a ballot per a appropriate petition or referendum by the public. I think in theory, the Fr, the Mid-American itself can request an election. Or you can have a scenario where if neither the council, Mid-American, or the public request an election, it can go forward without that. So a lot of different things going on, and I'll try not to make it more confusing.
Please. Anything else?
I have a question for you, Pete. In light of your motion, was the intent that it goes to a vote in November minus the fees?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I just want to move on to the next level.
Should be the September 4 meeting.
Okay.
And with that, I would make a second motion.
We're still in hearing.
I'm sorry, got to do the public hearing.
Are there any other comments from the public at this point? I think we've covered this. Go ahead.
Kerwin Stoller, getting back to Tricia, I guess. Yeah, I, I can remember conversations with Sam, but yeah, the city is in dire need of coming up with funds, and this would be a good way to do it. I, you know, I, somewhere similar to that. I, I've got paperwork that says that, and I questioned him on it. And I think Wayne has a good point, that we put the franchise fee on hold and let's go with our, let's see what happens with this budget, what we can do with it, and then we'll go from there, I guess. That, that'd be what I propose.
All right. Last chance.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Rule call, please.
Kent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Is Kelly here?
Yeah.
She is. Kelly, are you here, Kelly? I didn't see her come in. Oh, she is here, all right, good. At this point then, I would like to move on to that, move into that portion of our discussion of old business here. I trust that all of you have gotten a copy of the memo from Mica and Julie regarding this matter. I guess I'd just like to clarify a little bit how this process, because I was not here for the last discussion, unfortunately, how this process came along, appointing Kelly to the airport commission. In a random meeting with, running into one of the commissioners at some point, I was asking him if he had any ideas of who would make a good female board member, if there were any women pilots, I think is how I questioned, posed the question. Well, he didn't know of any, any of them. He knew of some wives of pilots that perhaps might interested, be interested, but he would get back in touch with me. A couple weeks later, he called and recommended the name, gave me the name of Kelly. I did some research, I talked to her. She was interested, she is a pilot, she comes with wonderful credentials. And at the time, my understanding was, it was a strong recommendation from the state, not a law at that point, was my understanding, but it was a strong recommendation that we each board or commission be, come, strive for gender balance. That's been on the books for a long time. And I have done that in appointments throughout the various boards, Pavilion Board, the Library Board. Not only gender balanced, but also looking to get more people involved. Caleb Scrooge, for example, was appointed to the Library Board. That was the next generation. I think Wayne had commented on that at his, when we were discussing or having the appointment process for mayor, getting that younger generation about. Caleb was one of those. Kelly is also one of those younger generation. She also is from, not from Sheldon, but from Premgar, which Sheldon is a regional airport, and granted, we are a, the city does support that, but it's a regional board. And I had commented a couple of meetings ago, when Kiana Johnson is here, if it's good for O'Brian County, it's good for Sheldon. If it's good for Sheldon, it's good for O'Brian County. There again, that was part of the rationale. There were several things that went into thinking. In terms of her credentials, she is very good, and I have nothing against Skip. Skip does serves well in that role, Skip Tanner. But again, for fresh blood, that... at some point, I was asking him if he had any ideas of who would make a good female board member. If there were any women pilots, I think is how I questioned, posed the question. Well, he didn't know of any of them. He knew of some wives of pilots that perhaps might be interested, but he would get back in touch with me. A couple of weeks later, he called and recommended the name, gave me the name of Kelly. I did some research. I talked to her. She was interested. She is a pilot. She comes with wonderful credentials. And at the time, my understanding was, it was a strong recommendation from the state, not a law at that point, was my understanding. But it was a strong recommendation that we each board or commission be, strive for gender balance. That's been on the books for a long time. And I have done that in appointments throughout the various boards, Pavilion Board, the Library Board. Not only gender balanced, but also looking to get more people involved. Caleb Scous, for example, was appointed to the Library Board. That was the next generation. I think Wayne had commented on that at his, when we were discussing, or having the appointment process for mayor, getting that younger generation involved. Caleb was one of those. Kelly is also one of those younger generation. She also is from, not from Sheldon, but from Primgar, which Sheldon is a regional airport, and granted, we are a, the city does support that, but it's a regional board. And I had commented a couple of meetings ago, when Kiana Johnson is here, if it's good for O'Brien County, it's good for Sheldon. If it's good for Sheldon, it's good for O'Brien County. There again, that was part of the rationale. There were several things that went into thinking. In terms of her credentials, she is very good. And I have nothing against Skip. Skip serves well in that role, Skip Tanner. But again, for fresh blood, that has been the encouragement from the paper, getting more people involved. All these things were going on in my head in making this appointment. I did not know that it was going to become this level of discussion. However, the correspondence, the communication from Mica and Julie M. Allen, I just want to read the conclusion. Based on the foregoing, the Sheldon City Council should consider appointing Kelly Eink to the Airport Commission to achieve gender balance as required by the Iowa Code. The current airport commission consists of five commissioners, all of which are men. With no female members currently serving and a qualified female appointee able and willing to serve, the language of the Iowa Code plainly states that the city council shall appoint Ms. Eink unless there is any valid agreement that Ms. Eink is not qualified to serve in this capacity. Per prior interpretation of the gender balance law by the Iowa ombudsman, the fact that Skip Tanner purportedly has more experience, better qualifications, and is willing to serve as airport commissioner is not a valid reason to reject Ms. Eink's appointment to this position. If the city council chooses to reappoint Skip Tanner, it is unclear what will happen because noncompliance with the gender balance law has not been litigated in the Iowa courts. Ms. Eink could potentially challenge the appointment, which could lead to lengthy litigation. It could also lead to ombudsman investigation if a complaint is lodged. Even if neither of these consequences transpire, the fact remains that the Iowa Code requires gender balancing at both the state and local level, and no exceptions appear to exist to allow the appointment of a person who is purportedly more qualified than a proposed appointee, whose opposite gender would result in compliance with the statute. So that is my, based on that, my recommendation to appoint her stands, and I now leave it in your hands, council. It's up to your, it's your decision to approve or not approve this recommendation. We need to have a motion first if we can get it on the, get it on the docket.
Make your motion to approve.
Second.
All right, now, Rob, then we have your opportunity for public comment.
Rob Dixon, this is moving to a whole new level. My hell, it sounds like we're purishing statutes and have moved this appointment to statute compliance, you know, obeying the law in essence. And that's unfortunate. I, again, in support of Skip. This isn't anti-Kelly, it's pro-Skip. And in all, with all due respect to Kelly, she's been innocently pulled into this through these proceedings. But anyway, to not reappoint Skip with his years of experience and the knowledge that entails, and his service as chairman, and so on, just point of fact, plain and simple, is detrimental to the board, irrespective of what some silly law may say regarding gender balance. I mean, I'm all for that, but give me a break. The, he, you know, the not reappointing him is detrimental to the board, just because of the resource he is and brings to the board. And it, that's the basic issue. Just, we have a known commodity and quality in Skip and his service, and it will be detrimental to not have him and allow him to continue to serve. Thank you.
Further discussion from the council? Marv?
Yeah, I have, I have something to add, too. I know Skip quite well. It's a sad day. For Sheldon, we had to come to this. I have nothing against, Kelly here, I have nothing against gender being so-called gender balanced, but I agree with Rob. I was just curious, you know, why, I was thinking to myself, why couldn't they change the ordinance if you wanted to do ordinance in law, put more people on these commissions, and incorporate more women? That probably would have worked. I don't know why that wasn't thought of, but it could have been done, I suppose. But not only that, you know, it's, maybe, I'm going to say it, I'm going, because I'm really curious about that. As long as they're going gender, maybe we better go look at the ethnic part of it, among women people. We got a lot of different races in our community. Have you asked any of them, on any of the commissions and boards? How about economic wise? If you ask, I mean, all these got to come, whether they're poor or rich or whatever, mix them in. If that's what we're coming to, I guess that's the way it is.
Mica, is there anything, any state statutes that would talk about anything other than gender balance on boards?
The Iowa law is specifically titled Gender Balance. It was written and approved by your legislatures, and it's at Iowa Code 69.16A, and the portion that applies to cities is subsection 2. And in regards to airport commissions, and the option of just making them larger, the Iowa Code, also passed by your legislatures, requires a commission of either five or three commissioners, but does not allow for a greater number.
Sam, you have a comment?
Nope.
That's what, okay. One comment I have, in terms of Skip's experience and so on, it is not unheard of, for example, the SEDC board, to serve a term. Terms expire, new people come in. So it's, we're not breaking new ground here by limiting Skip to the two terms that he has served, or whatever it was. And it's, I did, I didn't mention it before, but I did talk to Skip in this process. And in my conversation with him, he, there was no concern, amity, he understood. And my perception of it was, he was fine with this decision. So.
At our, Rob again here, at the meeting of the airport commission this past week, Skip reiterated in no uncertain terms his desire to continue to serve, and
And that was not communicated to me at the time we had our discussion.
Yeah. Well, this was just this past week, the commission met, and Skip, as I say, was forthright in his desire to continue to serve.
I guess the only other option we have at this point would be for someone else to step down. If you want Skip to serve, it would be for someone else to step down from the boards, but we can, assuming a council approves this appointment.
Yeah. Well, I'm hearing the parameters that are coming forth, and, yeah, to include the law and so on and so forth, which, as I said, has got to move this to a new level. But, but anyway, there's no doubt that Skip would wish to continue.
All right, council, anything else you want to add to this? Or that you need clarification on? Then I'm going to call for the question.
Farahona?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, let's move on then to item 5, new business, the Jacobson second edition. Open the public hearing for any comments on this at this point. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support. Roll call, please.
Hamel?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Farahona?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
All right. Next thing is directions. Sam, will you speak to that, please?
We could have a motion to approve the minor subdivision. You do have the option, if you choose, to ask the planning commission for recommendation. I don't believe that that's necessary, but you do have the option to ask for that. Staff and I recommend approval.
All move, we approve?
Support.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Farahona?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Motion carries. On to the city manager's report. Anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Comments from the council on my left? To my right? Anything from there?
Just, just one from me. Wastewater Treatment Plant. We had a progress meeting today, along with a substantial completion walkthrough. After today's meeting, I find it highly likely that Huguen Dorn will be sending us a letter asking us to grant substantial completion. I will gladly do that if they do so. We will be very close to being done here. They're finishing up punch list items. So on the first completion date, which was October 20, or October 31 of 2019, they're essentially there. The second completion date, which is the demo, is actually, they have until July of next year, July of '20. I fully expect them to make that by October. So project is moving along quickly. With that being said, if there's a time that the council wants to visit, if we want to set that up after a council meeting or something, I think any time after this would be acceptable. I know some of you have asked about that.
Are we running 100% through there now?
We've been running 100% of the flow through there for several weeks now. It's, it's performing very, very well. We're not quite meeting new permit limits that we have to meet by March of '20 yet, but that's mainly because a lot of the automation is not optimized. And Xylem Sanitaire is coming next week to help us optimize some of the new technology that we're not familiar with. And I find it quite likely after that process, we'll be where we need to be.
Terrific.
Very happy with the performance of the facility.
Good. Kurt?
Lyle.
And I have nothing, so we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. Roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Farahona?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.